Stand for the flag, Luke.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which I stand one nation under God, in thy name, with all due respect and honor.
The record shows that all council members are present. There's some changes to the agenda. So, can I get a motion on the agenda?
I'm going to accept the agenda as written.
Selecting order.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Agenda accepted. We sent a letter out to the school and the kids are creating stencils that are going to go into the sidewalk part of a sidewalk beautification that we're implementing. Pretty much going all creatures need clean water. So, between the school and orchard, we're going to have stencils of different creatures all along the sidewalk made by the kids at school. We'll have it drawing in three from each grade. It's part of our beautification. On Lake Road, I had a meeting with the park and pretty much nothing else they can do about it, but they will help. If we can get anywhere with some of the people up there or find land that we can obtain, they said that they will try and help us however they can. Getting that clutter of cars on the road out of there. We have raffle tickets that are still on sale for Goldust days. So, if you know anybody, pick them up, raffle tickets. And leave. That's it for now. Hi, Ios. Chief?
Got a few. So, there's a lot of talk going around about the state's new marijuana laws that they passed. Just a reminder that none of that goes into effect statewide until, at least the majority of it doesn't go into effect until 2016 July. So, it's not this year, it's next year. And the expectation is that there will be more amendments made before it actually takes effect. So, we're really not anywhere yet when it comes to that. One thing they did do is allow for some cities and counties to regulate some of this stuff on their own prior to the state law taking effect. I have not had a chance yet to read Snohomish County's ordinance that will go into effect, but my understanding from Commander Slack is that Snohomish County will have an ordinance that takes effect January 1. And I'll try to do some research on that and come back with a little bit of an expectation or just an idea of what to expect, I guess. So, we're working pretty hard right now trying to address a problem on 13th Street. We have some drug dealing going on over there and to the point where neighbors are not only making threats to take action on their own, but even to some degree kind of pushing the envelope. We've had one disturbance there just last night where one of the neighbors, he didn't get arrested, he didn't commit any serious crime or anything, but because of the way it was handled, you know, wound up in handcuffs before he was released and dusted off and everything was settled. So, we want to make sure that folks are calling us and trying to use us to do it and do it right and not try to go out and do something like that. I don't want to arrest good people for getting frustrated with bad people. So, we'll keep working on that one. And that's not marijuana, that's, we suspect heroin and possibly some methamphetamine. Just, I was a little bit late today because just arrested a pretty heavy meth user and a guy who's a suspect in several theft cases. Dealing with a trespass incident from across the tracks over here, still in the city limits though. While we were looking for the guy, the trespasser that ran from the scene, we found his partner in crime instead. So, Deputy Gray's calling him in to do some interviews and then take him down to county jail now. We've had a few burglaries. One of them in town involved stolen firearm. So, the other one was not in town, but the one was in town and involved a stolen gun. We had another one just outside of town that also involved a stolen gun. Had some tips today from the guy just arrested. I don't know if they're valid yet, we haven't had a chance to confirm them. But it's a burglary suspect that we all are very familiar with right here in Goldar. He spent some time away, but he's back. So, we'll see if those are current or valid or not. I suspect not, frankly. The guy we arrested doesn't usually give us good information, so we usually verify his information if it's false, but we'll see. But the idea is that we are trying, we are working on it and trying to get a handle on things out here the best we can. Pat Slack and Commander Jeski, well Assistant Commander Jeski from the Drug Task Force were out this way with us last week and the week before. And last week Commander Slack and I were out visiting a site further east where the guy's antics had just frustrated a whole lot of people, including most of us. And we took, from him, we took away 301 of his 346 marijuana plants. So, left him with what you're allowed to have and it go on. And the law doesn't actually say you're allowed to have it, it just says that you can use that for a defense and trial if you're charged with a crime. But it was enough to just say, we're not seizing the 45, you keep the 45 or take the 301. And so, and the idea isn't that so much that we're all up in arms and panicking over marijuana. The idea is that we have somebody that was causing problems and the marijuana was a small part of the issue. And code enforcement is finding the guy, health department is finding the guy, state labor and industries stepped into him last week, they were out there with us. So, my hope is that we'll get to see some more of those kinds of things going on out this way where we can start having a little bigger impact. Because what we're getting with this group over off 13th right now is that they're bragging that cops can't do anything to us, they won't do anything to us, the Drug Task Force won't come out here and work. And so, what we're going to do now is try to run the good people out of the neighborhood because they're interfering with our business. So, we all take that very personally, we all take that as somewhat of a personal challenge. And so, they were rather foolish to start bragging about that. I think they're going to find that things get a little difficult. So, when they step off the sidewalk and it wasn't a crosswalk, they'll be eating tickets and those kinds of things going on. But, you know, when they show that kind of disrespect to the law and they're putting it in, we'll enforce it on them, we'll just, so until they learn to respect it. That's what I got.
Thank you.
Just name to whom were they bragging?
One of the, one of the members of the community.
That's a special kind of student.
Yeah. Yeah. Maybe you had drugs or something.
Yeah, I could have something.
Did you comment, I'm sorry?
Fifth Street Sidewalk has been advertised and doors exchanged, plan specs and documentation forbidden, and we will be opening bids here at City Hall at 2:00 PM on June 18th. This should be a good job. You'll be interesting, you know, working with the school, that's a good idea, you know, getting a younger, about as young as you can get in the community to be part of rather than just sitting back and watching. I commend the mayor and the school for giving that program up. And the rest of mine, I'll be tired by time tonight.
Please.
No, I'll probably, I'll have some comments at the end.
I was wondering how the parking pass thing is actually, you know, the tickets, the traffic tickets. Anything ever got resolved?
I know, it's on the chief's door. He's checking why the courts are charging us higher than what they actually says we can charge, so.
I can answer that a little bit. That was, turns out that was a ruling by one or more of the district court judges in the county and they adopted that as their policy. They believe that parking tickets are non-traffic. RCW says they are, there may be a different RCW that says they're not, I don't know. So, they're calling them non-traffic, but the state still calls them traffic, so the, and so, they're charging, the city has to pay the fees for writing the ticket, but then the court isn't handling it their way. The city can raise the amount. And the state law requires that the city keep their parking fee structure in alignment with the philosophy of the state's rules. And the state's rules are that it's a $30 fine plus a $37 or $35 worth of administrative fees, our total is 65. So, the city should be, you'll want to run through your attorneys, but the city should be able to increase parking fees if they wish to up to that 65, if that's what they want to do, what you'd want to do. And so, I don't know if 65 is as high as somebody would want to go, but that, anything between the 37, I think, that the court's charging and that $65, I don't see how that would be out of line with the philosophy of the state's parking enforcement rules. So, and then we can just write it in our city code and that solves the problem. So, I haven't gotten back to the mayor with that yet, but.
Thanks, Russell.
Thank you.
I finished my grant writing class today. So, we actually, we learned a lot. We did a practice on the whiteboard of grant writing and just a whole lot of information, really, really good networking ideas and Donna Murphy and Sultan and Carolyn Eslick and Sultan and Debbie Cobble and Sultan, they've all said, you know, we want to not only teach you, but mentor you. So, yeah, it's going to be huge, so. I'm excited to start thinking about some ways we can look for grants because we sort of like lots of work to do. Thank you very much. Pretty exciting.
Are there any citizen comments at this time?
I'd like to thank whoever was involved in cutting the grass on the east end of town. Looks nice, kind of makes you feel like you're part of Goldar.
impressed that one. You did a good job.
They do.
Thank you. Any further comments? There's no old business. We have new business, the water system plan update has been changed to discussion and gentlemen, we'll take it from here.
We sent the water comprehensive plan to the Department of Ecology, probably about the fifth draft plan, for their final comments. And they got back with the city with 14 comments. It was all, that's pretty good. And most of them were some clarifications within the plan with language. There were two, two big items that we needed to address, funding. They had two questions that had to do with, you know, our capital expenditures, our everyday operations, and they basically were looking for, what are you doing? Our response back to the Department of Health is going to be with Richard Rodriguez, he's with the Department of Health, you know, he's seen our comments, but he can't really say much, but he said they're very pleased that we're doing a rate study. And that's what we commented back as we're in the middle of the rate study with KB, you know, that'll be done this, you know, shortly. And we'll be implementing that into the rates of the water. So, that's taken care of a couple of the big questions there. Now, in 2013, we prepared a call form monitoring plan and emergency response plan per the Department of Health's requirements. They come out with a form and every month you have certain places where you take your call form testing, and if you ever got a positive sample, then you would have to show it on your plan where you take your monitoring prior to that bad sample, directly after that bad sample and what source. We did all that stuff. We submitted the plan to the Department of Health and everything was on key to order. But now it's came time to, for the adoption by the Health Department on our water system plan. All water plans are a part of that water system plan. The language for groundwater rule, some of the requirements changed directly after I submitted that plan in 2013. One of the comments from the Department of Health was the city of Goldar will update their call form monitoring plan to meet the policy requirements, including the groundwater language and your surface and your emergency response plan. We contacted, meaning Bill, Pace Engineer and I had some discussions. Pace Engineers contacted the Health Department and said, the city of Goldar submitted just prior to the language change, there was no problems. We need to get this plan done. Can we respond in, and I have the questions here, can we respond to your comments saying that we will put that in the to-do list? You know, we got the capital plan, the years we're going to do it, we'll do it this year, by the end of this year, we'll have that updated. The Department of Health said, nope, we will not approve your plan as required. So, I got a response from the Health Department today reiterating that same comment, that they want to see that plan updated. All the bits and pieces are there. In our water comp plan, there's bits and pieces. In the current plan, there's bits and pieces. It's just putting it together in a format. Now, it will be difficult for me to do that because I've got the city comp plan coming up, I've got the sidewalk coming up, and I don't have all the templates, all of that. I've been talking, I've been talking with Bill Reynolds, you know, and it's nothing that Pace has done, it's nothing that we have done, it's nothing that the Health Department's done, it's just a requirement. For around $2,000, not to exceed, I can get them the information, they've got all the format, they've got templates for the emergency response plan and has all the information that the Health Department's looking for, and they can put one together for us. And if the council agrees to that, they'll pull somebody off what they're doing and start that tomorrow, and they should have that done in two days.
Is that, is that a set fee, $2,000?
Yes. No, I talked to him today and I said, you know, we've got a lot of that information. You know, I don't want to go over that. So, it could be lower than that, but that's where it says right now.
Not to exceed?
Not to exceed. You know, and it wouldn't, I don't think it would take another addendum to the contract. You know, there, we've got them under professional services with other people in the water. We could just go out and tell them to do it, the water, you know, the call form monitoring plan, and then submit it with the water comprehensive plan. So, you keep it separated. And then I could take it out of professional budget or professional services in the water system, you know, in the water budget. So, we don't have, you know, that, that was simplified things. It's a document that would need to be updated anyway, even if we are or not doing water comp plan, but there, you know, it's kind of, you know, through this to do this. And I am, at least I think that, that would be fine to do that, we've got professional services under O and M. Yeah. And the money is there. So, you know, I'm.
But do you need authorization, is that for you something else?
Yeah, but that's only authorization for that. Mr. Rodriguez, what he recommends, we've already, we've approved that final draft, which they reviewed and had the 14 comments. Prior to the council, writing an ordinance and approving the final comprehensive plan, Department of Ecology suggests that we wait for them, meaning Department of Health, to review our 14 comments. This is what? That water comprehensive plan. Water comprehensive plan. Prior to approving the water comprehensive plan, we wait for them to get back with us with their lessons on our 14 comments where they are ready to approve the final document, then we would approve it, the council, then the city sends DOH, Department of Health, the ordinance adopting the water comprehensive plan, then they would sign off on the water comprehensive plan. That's their suggestion, and that's probably what we need to do. And hopefully that'll be ready within two weeks. It all depends on this call form monitoring plan that they have to approve.
So, is that, I'm sorry, may I ask a question?
Sure, yes. Yeah, I get, I guess.
Okay. So, the call form monitoring, is that an automatic sampling issue or do we have to go out and physically sample?
We physically sample.
Water?
Physically sample.
Take the water samples and send it off to the lab to be checked for quality?
Three tests, three tests a month. And each month it's in a different location, it rotates, so you get a sample of all of your system.
So, it's not just, sorry, it's not just the wells? You're going around the community and?
Yes.
Testing hybrids or faucets or something?
Pardon?
You're testing hybrids or faucets or something?
Testing for quality.
I know, where?
Pardon?
What was the source of the water?
This is from our wells, well, three and a half.
No. Are you testing?
No, we go to people's taps, we go to people's taps. Different wells. I think that probably will take care of it for the water comprehensive. And if anybody on the council or in the audience would like to see their 14 questions that they had for us in the response, we'll have them here.
I'd like to, if we're through with the discussion, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the mayor be authorized to pay that $2,000 to Pace Engineering, up to $2,000 for this Health Department requirement. Pace Engineering can handle it much better than we can, and John don't have time, he's got a lot of work to do. So, Bill from Pace Engineering, project manager, has looked this project over and I feel that he would do us a good job and get this out of our hair. Very important that we get this, this water comp plan done with the Department of Health so we can adopt it here for City Council and get it, get it over with.
Can I get a second?
I'll second after.
Does anyone wish to discuss this matter? Oliver Baker?
Aye.
opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried.
What I'll do tonight, not for council meetings, shoot an email so we have the first round of the numbers.
We have a second reading of Order 673.
I would, I'd make a motion that we accept ordinance 673 as a second reading and as the, an acceptance of the final exception. For final exception. A second.
Anyone wish to discuss this?
So, all you, all you changed was this?
That's the only change, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried. Order 673 adopted. We have Snohomish County Drug and Gaming Task Force, your local agreement. Standing. Big changes.
This is the same as we have. This is the same as we have
before.
Every year, isn't it? I mean, we get, we get a lot of service there for $551.
Are we waiting for a motion? We haven't had a motion, I'm sorry.
We have a lot of motions.
Well, we proved in all that co-agreement, establishing regional drug game tax course for next year. At a very reasonable cost of $500.
Fifty one.
Fifty one dollars, yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Does anyone wish to discuss this further? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried. Continue the agreement with Snohomish County Drug Enforcement Task Force. 75, ordinance 675 is dealing with the city comp plan.
The city comprehensive plan. The final draft of the city comprehensive plan went to Department of Commerce. They have a 60-day review period where they take our plan, they review it, they make comments and they give us back, give it back to us. That 60-day comment period ends June 15th. Our consultants in Abby, who's the planner that's been working with me, she's been in contact with the Department of Commerce. And they're very pleased with what we've presented to them. On June 16th, that's two weeks from tonight, I believe, here at the council, we're going to have an open public hearing on the city comprehensive, to take any input from the citizens. That's been advertised twice in the paper. It's being advertised on our website. I believe it'll be advertised if it hasn't already been advertised here at City Hall, the post office. So it made all those requirements. After the public hearing, you know, the council takes testimony from the citizens. And if there's anything major that the citizens are looking at and the council wants to act on immediately and see if we can get that final draft changed, if there's possibilities. Remember, that comprehensive plan is, can be updated on a yearly basis. So I, I think the comments from the citizens, they become a part of that plan. And if you don't act on them on the yearly basis, you're going through that plan, the council has an option of incorporating some of those citizen suggestions at that time in making changes in the plan. On June 30th, the grant ends. I have a periodic table that I have to do in, correct me if I'm wrong, he says she's going to run for, for other city. I think on June 30th, the cycle ends, the funding stops. And we have to have everything to Commerce. You know, the final plan should be adopted. Hopefully it'll be adopted. And so you have an ordinance before you and what it's for is to open, you know, to get the ball rolling because of the time constraints to get it on the table. And it's, has to do with adopting the comprehensive plan. It's first reading, if there's no action taken. I talked with our planners and Abby. They felt it was a good idea. We just don't take any action until we have Commerce's blessing. And hopefully we can have that by the 16th. And we'll see what takes place with the, with the public hearing.
So this public hearing is at 7:00 PM on the 16th?
Yes, it's their regular council meeting.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, the public hearing is before the council.
Right.
On this type of action.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept orders number 675 as first read.
I'll second that. I have some, some questions though. Now, we need to pass this before it gets, before the state can approve. We have to have an ordinance saying that we, this is our comprehensive plan.
This isn't the water comprehensive plan.
No, no, I'm talking about city comprehensive.
No. You don't, you don't have to wait for Commerce to approve. Or you do have to wait, you can adopt it, but Commerce said it's better to wait for them to give their responses. They're satisfied with everything. We're not approving this today.
Yeah.
It's just
This is just
Okay. Yeah. What I needed to know, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to discuss anything? Order 675? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried. Introduction and first reading approved. Order 675 is amended titled 3.31 Street Improvement Fund. Second to your first readings, basically we're changing the use of the fund to incorporate all general and street grants rather than just a specific singular grant. Any second thing further?
Yeah, this was a recommendation from Harry. I, I guess that Fund 302 was created originally for a street grant to keep the grant expenditures and revenues separate from general fund. But we really need a place to do all grants that way. So that all grant revenue and expenditures can be in a one specific spot that you can go to and pull out and say, how much have you spent for this grant? Here's where it is. So what we'd like to do is change the name of that fund to make it general for all grants rather than specific to the street grant. Or any street grants we might get. So that's the purpose of this ordinance. Because the Fund 302 was created by ordinance, it has to be amended through an ordinance process as well.
I'll make a motion that we accept orders number 676 for a first reading.
Can I get a second? Second half. Does anyone wish to discuss this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried. Order 676, if you got your first reading is approved. We have one. We needed to go out and get some water meters to replace some older water meters that were broken. And didn't want to use the new ones for the automatic meter reading until we get the funds to actually bring in the software and have a whole system in place. So this is just asking for the money to do to get meter replacements until later.
I believe that we approved this amount of $1,775.20 to the general of the city for the spare, spare meters as I guess, you know, the replacement meters.
I'll second the motion.
Does anyone wish to discuss this further?
Yeah, I'm just curious, how much do the Wi-Fi meters cost? The ones with the
I haven't found out.
$100? Each? I was just curious.
We, we haven't heard of any of those new ones, have we?
No, I think we have a couple.
That's in our, that's in our water comp plan for next year or something like that.
Yeah, it's a big project.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion is carried. Any further council comments at this time?
Yes, I have a comment. I would like to find out if we could possibly have this, all of this information that the city council needs on Tuesday night, if we could have this in our boxes on Friday. This is what, we, we used to have it in our, in our boxes on Friday, which give us the weekend. Or if you didn't get it on Friday, you still had Monday and Tuesday to go over it. And although this was on the web and, and was readily available, I did read it on the web, but I noticed a lot of the city council had to wait and read the, the stuff tonight. So I think if it's possible for us to get this in our boxes on Friday and put our agenda out on Friday, then we could post our agenda at different places so more citizens would know what we're doing. If necessary, on the agenda, you can always amend it if something comes up afterwards. It's just a suggestion if, if it's possible to do.
Can I comment?
Sure.
I'm already putting the minutes in your boxes the Thursday before. I don't think there'd be any issue to do the packet that we have at that time. There might be additions at last minute amendments, but I think that would be possible.
It's possible to, to have it done.
Have your, you have your packets in your boxes the Thursday before the council meeting?
That'd be great. And luckily we could do, if there's a last minute amendment, we'll
And I really appreciate how they are online with the links. It is very, I was very impressed. And I think the city's really done a great job on our webpage in the last year. And maybe even a little, really improved from a few years ago. I, I do have another comment. I've made it to the chief, maybe. Why so little for the drug enforcement? We pay $551 and isn't that one of our main problems out here? I'm, I'm just curious why.
To go by population.
No, 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 I knew that, but I think the city would be willing to pay more than $551 a year to help with drug control. I'm sorry. Anyway, I'm sorry.
Destructure actually isn't, isn't that bad a deal if the, when the drug task force, you know, does what they do, they, they get their staffing from all of the agencies around. So several agencies actually contribute a person and pay that person's salary in addition to the funds that they pay into the drug task force. So if the city were ever wanting to look at paying more, what might be a reasonable way to go would be to have, say, the three contract agencies out this way, you know, Snohomish, Sultan and Goldbar, come together to see if the three combined could find a way to split up the funding of a body to add personnel to the drug task force. And what that does as well is give you a little bit of a stick in, hey, we're paying for that guy to work here, so we expect it to work out here. And so if, if there comes a time where the city wants to look at something like that, that would be my suggestion, is to look at, look to Sultan and Snohomish to see whether the three cities combined, because Sultan's having some of the same questions. Could, could fund that body at the task force, that extra government.
If I may add to that, though, on our funding, we also have to look at, we're short one sheriff as it is right now and it would be good if we can get that taken body back. I think that might be a priority for the, that it be a drug, to have our sheriff back because we lost the sheriff.
Oh, we're not going to give that?
Well, that would be a priority.
I mean, what, what's freezing why? We covered Abbott now.
Because we can't afford to have five, we have four.
Oh, I thought you said we were short one, so.
We are short one. That is a short one.
Yeah.
We used to have five. Not since I've been mayor, it just happened five.
Yes.
But it would be good if we can get that additional person back once again.
Would that be a negotiation for the contract for next year or something like that?
We can afford it.
If we can afford it, yeah.
Then you can address that during our budget times if you want.
I think as much as we have out here, whatever we can do to help. Yeah, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Any council comments?
I have a motion on the minutes for May 19.
I'll make a motion we accept the minutes as written.
Well, I'll second that except I would like a small change.
Oh, okay.
Where it says, the council manager, Mr. Robinson, to paint work on, it says First Avenue West, but it's actually First Street. So I, I would make that one change.
Right.
If that's okay.
So you put in a motion form?
Well, yes, I, I did that with a second. Do I need to redo the?
Well, someone has to do the
The motion needs to
Okay, I wish to amend the motion.
I meant, I meant to amend the motion.
Two dog does amended. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Amended it.
Please discuss this matter further. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried. Minutes are approved as amended. I get a motion on the vouchers?
I move that we approve voucher numbers three zero six four one through three zero six seven three for a total of forty seven thousand eight hundred thirty nine dollars and twenty one cents. Which twenty five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and forty five cents are claims. And twenty two thousand three hundred and seventy eight dollars and seventy six cents payroll.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Do we have any citizen comments at this time?
I have a question. Is the Green River law in effect?
I remember that. I'm not sure, and I'm sorry.
Well, I haven't seen the sign up for a really long time, but it always was.
Can you refresh me on the Green River?
Pardon?
Can you refresh me on the Green River law?
Oh, I, it's, um, it, you're a vacuum clean...